Thank you. Good morning. We have a quorum. We're gonna get started now. Ask for the guests and visitors to retire behind the rail. And as our members take their seats, we will get started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend David Pearson of North American Mission Board. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Greenly. I would ask all guests and visitors and members to please rise. Let us pray. God, I thank you for the opportunity today to pray for our great city. I pray for our mayor, our councilmen, or our councilwomen as they govern our city. Please give them wisdom, discernment, and guidance as they carry the weight of making decisions and leading our city. Jesus, I pray for our police officers and emergency workers. Protect them as they serve and protect Philadelphia. Give them wisdom, compassion, safety, as they're often on the front lines of dangerous situations. Jesus, I pray for our schools, the principals, teachers, and staff as they teach and train our children. Help our schools to be a safe place for our children to grow and mature. Jesus, I pray for our businesses and their owners. Please bless the businesses to grow and to help our city's finances and economy. Jesus, I pray for our families. I believe that families are the foundation of society, and may we see our families and marriages strengthened. I pray for the divisiveness that sometimes arises among the communities, races, and ethnic groups. May we experience the unity of the Spirit that can come only from you. Help us to see each other as brothers and sisters striving to better our city instead of focusing on our differences. God, I thank you that you love this city even more than we do, and that you live and love this city so much that you sent your son, Jesus, to die for the people of Philadelphia so that they could know you. I'm reminded of the story of Benjamin Franklin saying that he could walk up and down the streets of Philadelphia and hear the praises of God coming out of the doors and windows and the homes of Philadelphia. May we return to knowing you and knowing your love and living in a way that demonstrates the love of Jesus to those around us. May we not just call ourselves the city of brotherly love, but may we live and demonstrate that love to each other. God, I close by echoing the words of William Penn that are on a plaque in this very building when he prayed for Philadelphia many years ago, and he said, "I pray that you will keep us from evil that could overwhelm us." My soul prays to you, God, for Philadelphia that we may stand in the days of trial. I pray for our children to be blessed by you, and that people may be saved by your power. I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. Thank you so much, Reverend. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2016 be approved.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, February 11, 2016. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is a request for a leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen, and now the Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to welcome everyone who has taken time out of their busy day and come down to witness their government in action. We hope that you truly enjoy yourself. This is a special type of environment where you actually get to be close and personal with your elected officials unlike any other legislative body. So, I want to thank you. We hope you enjoy yourself so much that you come back again. And before I conclude and move on, I would like to ask if anyone has an electronic device, phone, or any other, would you please turn it on silent, or airplane mode, or whatever you have to turn it on to make sure that it doesn't make any noise during our session? Thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who will present a resolution recognizing the Honorable Marjorie Rendell. Would Judge Rendell and those accompanying her please join the Councilman at the podium? And joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilwoman Squilla, and Councilwoman Blackwell. We should probably bring the whole council up here. Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Bass, and Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to also ask for these students from E.M. Stanton to please come on the stage and join us, please. Let's give them a round of applause. This is our future. Just to give some of you some background, these young people who attend E.M. Stanton School, which is a jewel, public school jewel, in the city of Philadelphia, these young people participate in the Rendell Center for Civics and Civic Engagement. And so, oftentimes when we debate in the body of politics and how we conduct ourselves, we should always be constantly reminded that young people are watching our actions. And so, today, I am truly honored and privileged to have the opportunity to honor a young lady who, in my eyes, has done a considerable amount of great work within her own right, serving as the First Lady of the City of Philadelphia, serving as the First Lady of this Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, serving as a judge, but most importantly, a committed and compassionate public servant. Today, it's a pleasure and honor with my colleagues to honor the Honorable Judge Marjorie Rendell. I want to start off by reading some remarks by our former governor and mayor Ed Rendell, who couldn't be with us today. But I also recognize before I read the remarks that, as a newly married gentleman, on the side of every man is a even stronger woman. And so, today, the Honorable Rendell was here within her own right, and our former governor and mayor sends his remarks, because he couldn't be here, but the remarks are written as, "I am sorry I cannot be with you today. As Council honors Judge Rendell and the Rendell Center for Civics and Civic Engagement. Unfortunately, I have to be up in New York for a board meeting. I did want to thank you and the Council for this resolution. Judge Rendell worked extremely hard in her role as First Lady of the Commonwealth to advance the cause of civics education. She worked very closely with the former Justice Sandra Day O'Connor on a nationwide program, We the Civics Kids. She started the Penn Court Program to promote civics throughout our state. After leaving office, we both decided to start the Rendell Center as a means to continue this effort. Nothing is more important than getting our citizens involved in politics and government, because the more people vote and participate, the less the special interests can control things. Thanks again for this wonderful resolution and for your support of the judge and the Center's efforts." And that's on behalf of our former mayor and governor, Edward Rendell. But also, what's special about this particular program is that it inspires our young people to go on to be great things. These young people you seeing who are up here today that participate in the Rendell Civics and Engagement Program will ultimately become our judges, our lawyers, the next Council President, the next mayor, our state senators, our state senators, state representatives, as well as those who will run for U.S. Congress, and ultimately, the President of our United States. So, it's important to encourage our youth to engage in civics and politics, and I thank my colleagues for joining me in presenting this resolution. And the resolution reads, "Honoring and congratulating the Honorable Judge Marjorie Rendell for her contributions to the City of Philadelphia as judge, a First Lady, and an advocate for civics education."
Whereas, the Honorable Judge Marjorie Rendell has been an active figure in the City of Philadelphia since she began her career at Duane Morris and Hecture, and, I won't say, that lasted quite a few years.
Whereas, the Honorable Judge Rendell founded and chair of the Avenue of the Arts Incorporated since 1993 to help the city of Philadelphia revitalize Broad Street. Whereas, the Honorable Judge Rendell has taken an active role in encouraging civic education among school students since she established the Penn Coalition of Representative Democracy, or Penn Court, in 2004 while still the First Lady of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Whereas, since the Honorable Judge Rendell's establishment of Penn Court in 2004 and the subsequent creation of the Rendell Center for Civics and Civic Engagement in 2014, Judge Rendell has been working to reinvigorate civic education and civic engagement among the youth of Pennsylvania.
Whereas, the Honorable Judge Rendell's Center for Civics and Civic Engagement fosters active civic learning among the youth of Pennsylvania through the incorporation of civic knowledge, public action, and democratic deliberation. And whereas, the Rendell Center is now even more effective in partnership with the Annenberg Public Policy Center, which has partnered with middle and high school students in encouraging civic engagement in students K through 12 in the Philadelphia School District.
Whereas, the Honorable Judge Rendell has moved to senior status in the Third District Court of Appeals, where she has held a seat since 1997 in order to spend more time focused on the Rendell Center for Civics and Civics Engagement. And whereas, the Rendell Center coordinates such civic engagement events as the Citizenship Challenge, where fourth and fifth grade students are asked to respond to a constitutional question and receive the opportunity to participate in a mayoral forum in May and October, where the students were able to pose questions to the mayoral candidates about everything from police brutality to education.
Whereas, the Honorable Judge Rendell's dedication to civics education and civic engagement has made a major impact on the youth of Philadelphia and continues to do so. Now therefore be it...
Resolve that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors and congratulates the Honorable Marjorie Rendell for her contributions to the City of Philadelphia as a judge, a First Lady, and an advocate for civics education. And on behalf of the City of Philadelphia, members of the City Council, we'd like to present you with this citation.
Chair recognizes Judge Rendell for remarks.
As you all can probably imagine, I've spent a lot of time in this wonderful place called City Hall, but this has to be the best, because it speaks to my passion as a citizen, working on Avenue of the Arts, which I had the pleasure of working with Council President Clark for many years, Kimmel Center, my work as a judge, and finally, my work as a civics advocate. And the reason we have these wonderful youngsters here is because the Rendell Center, and I have to give a plug for Ed Rendell and thank him for his remarks, but he really came up with the idea of starting the Rendell Center once we had left Harrisburg, and he has done a lot of work in fundraising, as I'm sure you can imagine, and he is on our board, and we really are co-chairs of that effort. But these youngsters are from E.M. Stanton School, a school that two years ago was slated to be discontinued and scrapped, and now we have a wonderful, vibrant school led by a fabulous principal, Stacy Burnley. And the Rendell Center has been working, piloting with these youngsters to improve the level of civics education with Mock Trial and the Citizenship Challenge and We the Civics Kids, and I've come to know them and love them, and their teacher, Joan Carter Williams, just one of the teachers, and let's give her a great round of applause. Our teachers are amazing, and these teachers have spent extra hours learning the curriculum and doing wonderful things, and we go on the road, don't we, Joan? We go on the road to talk about civics education, and I have to thank Councilman Johnson for his efforts with E.M. Stanton. Through his efforts, we have a totally renovated cafeteria, a workspace that is light and bright, that brings the light in and energizes the kids and the parents and the whole community, and I have to thank him for doing this. Let's give him a round of applause. Some other people here who are part of my life, I have brought my three law clerks so they can see what I do in my copious free time, and my son Jesse, who is here, who is involved in the community as well. In fact, everybody who came over to say hello to me knew Jesse more than probably they knew me, because I'm very proud of him. So, I want to thank you all very much. This has been a wonderful labor of love for me, and I continue to work towards the betterment of our city and our children. Thank you so much. Specker and our curriculum director, Anne Specker, who are here, so thank you.
Thank you, and again, congratulations, Judge Rendell. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, who will present a resolution recognizing Zaire Bam Anderson. Would Mr. Anderson and those accompanying him please join the Councilwoman at the podium? And in the spirit of intergovernmental cooperation, we also have our good friend, State Representative Jason Dawkins.
Want to ask Jada to come up too?
And joining the Councilwoman, we have Councilman Jones.
And Jada.
I'll bring all the Frankfurt Proud folks.
And Ms. Anderson, before we start, I just want to ask, are you a free agent? You're not available? All right, because we can use a little help here in the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you so much. Frankfurt suffered a tragedy this weekend with a massive fire, and I want to take a moment to thank Mayor Kenny and the 150-plus firefighters who were out there in horrendous weather conditions fighting the battle in Frankfurt. I was joined by Word Leader Savage and others. And Frankfurt is a proud community, very, very proud. If you're Frankfurt-born and raised, you're very proud, right? And this is an incredible story, and we're not going to capture everything here, and our Council alumni, Representative Jason Dawkins will add in his remarks, he has an incredible story, because his journey was not an easy one, it was not a traditional one. And so, I encourage all of you, as you share, particularly as we talk about young folks, we don't need to go far to be proud of the many successes that we have in the city of Philadelphia. I'm very, very proud to always represent Frankfurt, but particularly today, because in the midst of a tragedy, we still can celebrate as a people. And I'm sure that there is going to be part of that rebuilding of Frankfurt that we need to do along that Commercial Carter. So, thank you, and so today, we're recognizing and congratulating and honoring Zaire Bam Anderson on an outstanding season as a member of the Super Bowl LV champion Denver Broncos. Whereas, Zaire Bam Anderson was born on August 18, 1992, he's a kid, in Philadelphia, and attended Frankfurt High School, where he was named the first team All-Philadelphia Public Selection in his senior season.
Whereas, Zaire Anderson was a Frankfurt Charger alum before. He went on to become an inside linebacker for the University of Nebraska, and later joined the Denver Broncos in the National Football League as a college free agent on May 5, 2015. In his time at the University of Nebraska, Zaire earned an honorable mention, all Big Ten Conference honors, and graduated with a degree in Child, Youth, and Family Sciences in 2014. We should give him a round of applause for that. Whereas, the Frankfurt Chargers is a proud football organization that has been serving the Frankfurt section for over 48 seasons, with a mission statement of acting as positive, supportive, and concerned role models in order to inspire and provide youth with the necessary tools of living a productive and successful life. Whereas, on Sunday, February 7, 2016, at Levi's Stadium in Santa Clara, California, in front of over 68,000 fans and millions more watching at home, including me, Zaire and the 14-and-four Denver Broncos took on the 16-1 Carolina Panthers. And whereas, after a tremendous defensive game, following the leadership of quarterback Peyton Manning and Super Bowl Most Valuable Player Von Miller, the Denver Broncos sealed their third Super Bowl franchise in the history of the organization with a victory over the Carolina Panthers, 24 to 10. And...
Whereas, as a member of the Frankfurt Chargers, Frankfurt High School pioneers, the Nebraska Cornhuskers, and now the member of the Super Bowl LV champion Denver Broncos, Zaire is viewed as a role model by the many youth throughout Frankfurt and the city of Philadelphia for his tremendous accomplishments throughout his athletic career by encouraging young athletes to continue to follow their dreams and passions. So, there be resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes, we congratulate him, we honor him, we thank him for representing Frankfurt Proud. Zaire Anderson, on his outstanding season with the Denver Broncos, had capping off his Super Bowl championship. And further be resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to him. We're happy that he could come and join us so quickly, as a sincere evidence and respect and admiration from this legislative body. I'm going to ask Representative Jason Dawkins to say a few words before we hear from our
Good morning. So, let me just clear the record up. I got Coach Mark back here steaming. He did play for the All-Ni Gators, right? I got to give him credit. I represent the 179th, so that means I have All-Ni in Frankfurt. So, as much as I'm proud of him being from Frankfurt, we also have All-Ni that we got to take care of. I'd like the Councilman mentioned earlier, I've known Zaire pretty much all of his young adult life. Me and his older brothers were pretty much best friends growing up, and he's been an inspiration, not only to myself, but I think to the city of Philadelphia as a whole. Regardless of where he may play, I think kids back home get the opportunity to see that anything's possible. When you ignite that possibility within yourself, anything can be achievable. I think Zaire speaks to exactly what that means. He never allowed no to get in the way of yes, because he never believed there was that actual no. He always believed there was either you're going to win or you're going to learn, and he learned from all the challenges in his life to make sure that he would never make an excuse, because excuses, we know, build bridges nowhere. So, I am proud of this young man and what he's going to do, not only for this city, but for the entire youth movement that's going on in our city that needs a role model. So, thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Mr. Anderson for remarks.
Well, I ain't really got a speech or anything, but I'm proud, man, just to be from Frankfurt and to be from Philadelphia and to be able to bring a Super Bowl back and, you know, have my family and friends around me and all the support here. So, thank everyone that came, and I really appreciate it.
Counsel, be at ease. Counsel, be at ease. Council convenes. Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Derek Green, who will present a resolution honoring and recognizing and celebrating the 30th Black Engineers of the Year Award STEM Conference. With Dr. Christopher Jones and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Green, we have Councilman Jones, Councilman Don, and Councilwoman Young.
Good morning. As all you know, that February is Black History Month, and although much has achieved, been achieved, much more needs to be done and needs to be achieved. And it's very important that we're here today to do this resolution, in particular because there was a recent article in U.S. News &amp; World Report about a study that Georgetown University did that showed that African-Americans have more access to college than ever, but are really underrepresented in very high-paying fields and major fields like engineering. That's why it's very important to do this resolution this morning. Honoring, recognizing, and celebrating the 30th Black Engineers of the Year Awards STEM Conference. Whereas hosted by U.S. Black Engineer and Information Technology Magazine, the Council of HBCU Engineering Deans and Lockheed Martin Corporation, the 30th Annual Black Engineers of the Year Awards Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Conference will take place on February 18th through 20th, 2016, at the Philadelphia Marriott Downtown in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and...
Whereas conference events and presentations aim to address the inequities of diversity in technology and science as a means for increasing awareness, improving attitudes, and expanding opportunities for the current and future workforce. And whereas African-American students are more than twice as likely to switch to other majors as are white and Asian-American students, in 2006, just 5.2% of the engineering degrees awarded to U.S. citizens went to African-Americans, and...
Whereas this event-packed, three-day event unites more than 8,000 industry entrants and professionals, including college representatives and leaders embodying the upper echelon in STEM for an agenda that will include training and networking opportunities, seminars and workshops, and the conference's Popular Career Fair, which provides access to leading employers, and...
Whereas the winner of the 2016 Black Engineer of the Year Award is Christopher Jones, Corporate Vice President and President of Northrop Grumman Technical Services Sector. Mr. Jones has provided, in technical expertise, the business acumen there since 2004. After leading flight testing, research, and analytical innovation rotorcraft technologies... Pretty smart. At the Aircraft Corporation, among other assignments, and...
Whereas Mr. Jones previously demonstrated scholastic excellence, earning a bachelor's degree in aerospace engineering from the Georgia Institute of Technology, followed by master's degrees in aerospace engineering and engineering management from the University of Dayton, then by doctor in aerospace engineering from the University of Virginia... I'm sorry, University of Maryland. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Council does hereby honor, recognize, and celebrate the 30th Black Engineers of the Year Award STEM Conference.
Chair recognizes Dr. Jones for remarks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this recognition and very humbled by this award. I think a common theme from the activities so far today has been education. And, you know, this is a, the award is focused on engineering, but I think continuing to focus on education in general will serve us well. And as has been noted, you know, blacks in particular are underrepresented in the engineering and STEM career field. But the United States also is not producing enough, you know, technical and engineering talent to supply the needs of industry. And so part of my role at Northrop Grumman is to help partner with civic organizations, with nonprofits, with government, and with other agencies to make sure that we're producing the talent that we need, both in our industry and in all industries in general. And so I, again, thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you, Philadelphia, for hosting this event. Events like this are going to go a long way. There's a lot of work to do, but a lot of progress has been made. So I'm hopeful that collectively, we can help solve this issue and create the talent that we need and help, you know, provide the folks that companies like Northrop Grumman, our industry and our nation, need. Thank you very much.
Council convenes.
At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution honoring the 2016 Philadelphia Living Legends. Would the 2016 Philadelphia Living Legends and those accompanying them, please join the Councilman at the podium. Joining them is Councilman Green, Councilman Greenly, Councilman O., Councilwoman Bass. I'm going to say, majority of Council will be up here. You want to please, yes?
Continuing the theme of Black History Month, what we've tried to do with Living Legends is to point out unsung heroes that from time to time get overlooked but make huge differences in our society as a whole and in African-American communities in particular. It takes 10,000 hours, it's said, to be an expert at any single field of endeavor. To be a doctor, to be on this stage, it took 12 years of elementary school, middle school, and high school, took four years of college, it took another four years of medical school, and then it took a four-year residency to deepen your knowledge of medicine. A total of 24 years of education, 8,600 days, 12 million minutes of education dedicated to this field of endeavor. And the cost of it, one of our councilpersons is particularly aware of it because his daughter, and he's not here, is a doctor, Dr. Nicole Bright, a dermatologist who practices in New Jersey, because otherwise she'd have been up on this stage. She is a 2,000th graduate of Pecan. So it takes a lot to be up here, and we recognize them today. Honoring and celebrating Philadelphia's African-American dentists and physicians for the preservation of life, limb, health, healing, and happiness in 2016's Philadelphia Legends Award. All are part of the commemoration of Black History Month. Whereas, the world's first individual to be named a physician was an Egyptian man of color named Imhotep, who was also a medical professor, author of numerous medical books. Imhotep is regarded as the founder of ancient Egyptian medicine, and...
Whereas Imhotep is credited as the author of the Edwin Smith Papyrus, a textbook on surgery that details anatomical observations and the examination, diagnosis, treatment, and prognosis of numerous ailments. Medical information in it dates from as early as 3,000 B.C. And whereas Imhotep is further credited with diagnosing and treating over 200 diseases, including tuberculosis, gallstones, appendicitis, gout, and arthritis, and for extracting medicine from plants. Imhotep knew the position and function of the vital organs and the circulation of the blood, and performed surgery as well as practicing some dentistry, and...
Whereas the art and practice of healing the human mind, body, and spirit since antiquity has been a highly celebrated and most revered profession, and occasionally, as in the case of Imhotep, those who are very well-regarded for their work are deified for their contributions to the health and happiness of the common people. And whereas, in remembering the history of the first physician, it is befitting that Black History Month honor African-Americans who presently carry forth the lauded tradition of health, healing, and happiness through the practice of medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. David Adley is a cardiovascular disease specialist with more than 20 years of diverse experience and practicing his expertise in Philadelphia. He graduated with honors from Philadelphia College Osteopathy. And whereas Dr. DeCarla Albright is an obstetrics-gynecology specialist with more than 19 years of diverse experience and practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She graduated from the University of Michigan School of Medicine. Whereas Dr. Nicole Alise Akhi, I hope I said that right, is a pathology specialist with more than 15 years of diverse experiences and practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She is a graduate of the University of Pennsylvania School of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Charles Champion is a dentist with more than 10 years of diverse dentistry experience. He is a graduate of the Temple School of Dentistry. And whereas Dr. Alan Chandler is a pediatric specialist with more than 35 years of diverse experiences and practices his expertise in Philadelphia. He is a graduate of Thomas Jefferson University College of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. Adam Craven is a dentist with more than 30 years of diverse dentistry experience, including implant dentistry. He's a graduate of the University of Maryland Dental School. And whereas Dr. William Dodd is a dentist with more than 25 years of diverse dentistry experience. He specializes in prevention, diagnosis, and treatment of diseases of the gums, teeth, and jaw. He is a graduate of Temple University School of Dentistry. And whereas Dr. Gerald Devon is a cardiovascular disease specialist with more than 37 years of diverse experience and practicing his expertise in Philadelphia. He's a graduate with honors from Honeman University College of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. Ayla A. Frey is a pediatric surgeon specializing in neonatal procedures, minimally invasive pediatric surgery, and pediatric colorectal surgery. She is practicing in Philadelphia and is graduate at the Pennsylvania State University College of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Vaughn C. Graves is a dermatology specialist with more than 39 years of diverse experience and practice of his expertise in Philadelphia. He graduated with honors from Temple University School of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Patricia H. Jones is an obstetrics-gynecology specialist with more than 32 years of diverse experiences, practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She graduated with honors from Honeman University College of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. David E. Knox is a cardiovascular disease specialist with more than 40 years of diverse experience and practicing his expertise in Philadelphia. He is a graduate of Pennsylvania State University College of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Elana O. McDonald is a pediatrician specializing in adolescent medicine. She is a graduate of Pennsylvania State University College of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Gregory A. Nelson is an internal medicine specialist with more than 38 years of experience and practicing his expertise in Philadelphia. He graduated with honors from Boston University School of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. Donald Bruce Parks is a family practice specialist with more than 38 years of diverse experience and practicing his expertise in Philadelphia. He graduated with honors from Thomas Jefferson University College of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Emily F. Pollard is a plastic and reconstructive surgery specialist with more than 32 years of diverse experiences and practicing her specialty in Philadelphia. She graduated with honors from the Harry Medical College School of Medicine. And whereas Dr. Wendy S. Powell is an obstetrics-gynecology specialist with more than 31 years of diverse experiences and practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She graduated from the State University of New York Upstate Medical University, and...
Whereas Dr. Sophia S. Shabazz is a family practice specialist with more than 14 years of diverse experience and practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She graduated with honors from the University of Pennsylvania School of Medicine, and... Whereas Dr. Agnes H. Simmons is a general practice specialist with more than 39 years of diverse experience and practicing her specialty in Philadelphia. She is a graduate of Thomas Jefferson University College of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. Delaina Wardlaw is a family practice specialist with diverse experiences and practicing her specialty in Philadelphia. She is a graduate of Pennsylvania State University College of Medicine, and... Whereas Dr. Denise Nguyen Baker is a pediatric specialist, I know that name, with more than 23 years of diverse experiences and practicing her expertise in Philadelphia. She is a graduate of Temple University School of Medicine, and... She is a graduate of Temple University School of Medicine, and...
Whereas Dr. Lawrence Robinson is a former deputy health commissioner in the city of Philadelphia and a graduate of Harvard University of Pennsylvania Medical School and the John Hopkins School of Public Health and represents us on the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs. And whereas Dr. Walter Bantam is a practicing internist whose primary office is located in West Philadelphia and a graduate from the University of Pennsylvania Medical School and has been in practice for over 40 years, and as well has served in more clinics and around the city than anyone I know, and also one who we call and have called for people who've come from other countries who needed help and as, uh, as well...[655.12][655.12](laughing) Look, this man is my brother-in-law, so...[659.12][659.12](laughing) That's right.[662.54][662.54](laughing) And he's an excellent doctor. We've called him for people who needed help, who didn't have anything, and he's always been there, and we're proud of him. Thank you, and...[672.43][672.43](laughing) Lift him up, Councilwoman Blackwell. Whereas Dr. Milton Robinson is practicing dentist in Philadelphia in Barrington, New Jersey, and is the principal of Dentow Center for Dentistry, and well-known and respected activist in our city with the Boys and Girls Club. And whereas Dr. Anthony Pharoah is a practicing orthodontist with offices in Center City in Mount Airy. He's a graduate of Central High School, Penn State University, Penn State University, and the Temple University School of Dentistry. Now therefore...
So if y'all gonna get sick, it's a good time to do it right, right now.[716.12][716.12](laughing) Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby honors and celebrates Philadelphia's African-American dentists and physicians for the preservation of life, limb, health, healing, and happiness as Philadelphia's 2016 Living Legends recipients, all as a part of the commemoration of Black History Month. Further be it resolved that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Philadelphia's Living Legends as evidence of our sincere admiration of this entire legislative body. Signed by Councilman Curtis Jones and all members of council.
Congratulations.[755.82][755.82](applause)
The Chair recognizes Dr. Win Baker for remarks.
On behalf of my colleagues, we would like to thank you very much for this honor. I would like to first and foremost thank God for His blessings. I would like to thank my family for their support, and of course thank Councilman Curtis Jones for this honor. As a pediatrician, on the front line of healthcare, taking care of children from birth to young adulthood, and passing the torch on to my adult medicine colleagues, which sometimes is a torch, however, what we have gone through to get to where we are today, we can handle it. And we'll continue the journey, the war, to enrich, to direct, to save our children and our community. Thank you very much.[828.30][828.30](applause)
Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk.
Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body an ordinance amending Bill Number 150162, approved June 18, 2015, entitled an ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2016 through 2021 inclusive, by adding and revising certain projects, amounts, and sources. Add an ordinance amending Bill Number 150163, approved June 18, 2015, entitled an ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2016 capital budget, by adding and revising certain projects, amounts, and sources. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 from the General Fund, the Department of Revenue, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, the Commission on Human Relations, the Auditing Department, and the Grants Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance, provision for other grants, to the General Fund, the Mayor Office of Community Empowerment and Opportunity, the Managing Director, the Managing Director of Legal Services, the Department of Streets, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Health, the Department of Public Property, the Department of Human Services, Office of Supportive Housing, the Director of Finance, the Department of Revenue, the City Representative, the Director of Commerce, the Law Department, the Board of Trustees of the Free Library of Philadelphia, the Commission on Human Relations, the Auditing Department, the Register of Wills, and the City Commissioners, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The next order of business is introducing bills or resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions this morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one non-privileged resolution, co-sponsored by everyone, and that includes Al Taubemberger, David O., Derek Green, Cindy Bass, Alan Dom, Helen Gem, and Blondell Reynolds Brown, and signed by all members of council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution calling for the City Council Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings on the social services issues affecting the African and Caribbean communities in our city, as well as other minority communities from Latino and Asian countries.
Thank you. That will be on this week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia redevelopment authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the 29th ward of the City of Philadelphia.
That'll be on next week's final passes calendar, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one bill on your behalf and another myself, along with Councilwoman Squillen.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by amending certain definitions, and amending Chapter 17, 2000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled First Source Jobs Policy by designating the Economic Opportunity Review Committee to oversee implementation and enforcement of the city's first source jobs policy.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode B of the Philadelphia Building Code, and thus amending PA Uniform Construction Code for Philadelphia to add sections requiring contractors, design professionals, and developers to add additional fire-resistant material to structures containing truss construction and other light frame construction.
That bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have one bill.
An ordinance authorizing the installation of all weigh-stop signs at the intersection of 22nd Street and Porter Street.
Bill will be referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have four bills, two co-sponsored by my colleague Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown. I'd like to speak to them after the title has been read.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new Chapter 4100 entitled New Sustainable Businesses to reduce the tax burden on new sustainable businesses. And an ordinance amending Section 19, 2600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Privilege Taxes to revise the Sustainable Business Tax Credit by changing the criteria for eligibility. And an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 from the General Fund to the General Fund. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Westmoreland Street, Front Street, Hope Street, and Allegheny Avenue.
Thank you. Those bills will be, those six bills will be referred to the committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, many of my colleagues joined me for the first presentation by our new mayor, Jim Kenny, to the Chamber of Commerce. There, he's been consistent in his message about the need for the city to grow jobs, his commitment to invest in our neighborhoods, and create a streamlined approach to new businesses in the city of Philadelphia. Today, co-sponsored by my colleague Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, I'm introducing a package of bills to support B corporations. My goal, I want the city of Philadelphia to become the B corp capital of the war, of the world. Benefit corporations are hugely important and throughout the world are making a difference in creating family-sustaining jobs, creating entrepreneurial opportunities, businesses who believe in reinvesting in the neighborhoods in which they operate. These businesses could be anywhere. Hopefully, they will choose to be in Philadelphia, and they will do business everywhere. They are about profit and economic benefit to the surrounding community, but they are also about people. They abide by fair and favorable labor practices, and they are also care about our planet because they employ and use sustainable environmental practices. Along with Business Sustainability Network and others, I look forward to working with the administration on these bills as we provide opportunities and a streamlined approach to these B corp corporations. I ask my colleagues to join me to support through this process. We will work with the revenue about the cost around these incentives, but I look forward, and I hope folks begin to hashtag that, Philly B corp capital of the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one bill today.
An ordinance amending various provisions of the Philadelphia Code, including in titles for the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, 9, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and 14, Zoning and Planning, to preclude issuance of certain licenses and permits to any applicant who is delinquent in payments owed to the city.
Thank you. That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gem.
Good morning, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubemberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Good morning, Mr. President. I offer one, uh, not, uh, privileged resolution today.
A privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Maya DeJesus for her courageous anti-bullying message and commitment to help other young victims of bullying.
And that resolution will be on today's final passes calendar, and that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and we now have our reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen for a report from the Committee on Streets and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Streets and Services reports eight bills with a favorable recommendation.
And Mr. Decker, please read our report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Streets and Services, to which is referred Bill Number 160007, entitled an ordinance repealing an ordinance, Bill Number 150894, entitled an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 119 and abandoning of a certain pedestrian walkway reserved within the bed of former Thompson Street from Watch Street to 13th Street. And Bill Number 16008, entitled an ordinance amending Title 12 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Traffic Code to provide requirements regarding the safe operation of self-propelled mobility devices and to provide for enforcement and penalties. And Bill Number 160011, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Linden Avenue to Ashburner Street, and both sides of McGargy Street from Torresdale Avenue to Frankfurt Avenue. And Bill Number 160014, entitled an ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 42S and abandoning of a right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes, water main purposes, and public utility purposes, which extends from the southerly terminus of Galloway Street from south of Packer Avenue, southward lead to Patterson Avenue. And Bill Number 160017, entitled and ordinance authorizing the striking from City Plan Number 27S and abandonment of a right-of-way reserved for drainage purposes within the lines of former Jackson Street from Swanson Street to Vandalyer Street. And Bill Number 160071, entitled an ordinance authorizing Relance Casse to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1204 Frankfurt Avenue. And Bill Number 160092, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-truck parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Ashburner Street to the Penny Pack Creek. And Bill Number 160093, entitled an ordinance establishing a no-tractor trailer parking regulation on both sides of Torresdale Avenue from Ron Street to the Penny Pack Creek. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mrs. Decker. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit the first reading this day of the bills that were just read into council, eh, eh, end of the record with the exception of Bill Number 160007.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended, so as permit first reading this day of Bills Number 16008, 160011, 160014, 16007, 160071, 160092, and 160093. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Bill Number 16007 will be placed on the first reading on our next session of council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Gem for a report from the Committee on Children and Youth.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The Committee on Children and Youth reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Children and Youth, to which is referred Bill Number 16009, entitled an ordinance authorizing the managing director to contract with the Support Center for Child Advocates for the provision of professional services to the city for representing children in certain legal matters, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports it as considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gem.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended... Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading on this day of Bill number one six zero 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 nine.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended, so as to permit first reading this day of bills number one six oh oh nine. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our reports from committee, and the next order of business is the consideration of calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee with the suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading, and these bills will be on our second reading and final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar today, the Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purposes of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passage calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions are called up for second reading, final passage calendars today. Bill numbers one six zero one one six, one six zero one two one, one six zero one two three, one six zero one two four, one six zero zero three five, one six zero zero three six, one six zero zero three seven, and one six zero zero three eight.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering the resolutions on today's final passage calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follow. If you have an interest in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage calendar today, if you have not already done so, I would ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, I'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Mr. Decker, will you please call the first name?
Joe Denahell commenting on one six oh one one six.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here again. On two eleven sixteen, Councilman O's response to my speeches in this member of the people's opinion cited events I don't recall showed a shocking lack of compassion. I am truly ashamed to say that I voted for him. Compassion and desire to investigate possible serious violations of constitutional law that leave any owner in Philadelphia homeless are requirements of a public official. See U.S. Code, see oath of office, Constitution, et cetera. If no one buys property, values sink, tax revenues fall. Why would you buy if you were treated like Mel Greco pizza, Urs James Dupre, Dr. Turner, Glenn Mancedi, me and others unnamed? In my opinion, the city is taking the Catholic Church pedophile priest method of dealing with this issue. Council and the mayor's office show no concern to solve this. They seem to want to spend lots of money to litigate it instead. Council, mayor's office, RDA, and their attorneys have opposed a Seventh Amendment common law jury trial in my situation. Is that even allowed? Cooper B. Aaron states public officials cannot war with the Constitution without violating their duty or oath of office to support it. Some might call this treason. As a city with underfunded schools, are legal bills the highest and best use of these funds? How many decades does it take for my speedy trial? In nineteen ninety, why I purchased a home as referred to in a later article as even the federal government is suckering buyers. Then came eighteen years of waiting for the city to act while received funds. I read several articles and communications from HUD that alluded to the city receiving up to forty million or more extra money for over a decade. Newspaper reports only thirty-two million total were spent on Logan. I guess that's where the extra funds in the ten fifteen article that quotes Abernathy from the RDA as saying upwards of a hundred million taxpayer dollars may be given to a developer to build a shopping mall on top of my former home that was taken from me without payment for my fully remodeled three-apartment, two-storey front building. It was sold to me as a shell by a self-identified HUD agent for six thousand dollars. I was offered ridiculously outrageous amounts of a hundred, eight hundred dollars by the RDA. The city has had plenty of funds, according to federal officials, to solve this problem. Why do you, as agents and agencies solely designed to serve the people and conduct our business, refuse to solve this problem? I quote Paul Robeson, "The answer to injustice is not to silence the critic, but end the injustice." These articles and previous submissions require immediate funding of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority before laws, as in the above and previously mentioned, are violated by you, agents and agencies of the government, now duly notified.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
One second. We're having a technical difficulty.
Thank you. We will now move towards our calendar. And Mr. Decker, could you please read the title of one six oh one one six?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the third and sixth wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh one one six is approved. Mr. Decker, one six oh one two one.
A resolution urging Congress to pass Healthy, the Healthy Maternity and Obstetric Medicine Act, otherwise known as the Healthy Mom Act.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh one twenty-one is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh one twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the eighteenth, nineteenth, and thirty-seventh wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
President, I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh one twenty-three is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh one twenty-four.
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to Execute and Deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration D's conveying conditional fees simple titled sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the thirty-first ward of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squillen.
Good morning, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and one six oh one twenty-four is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh oh thirty-five.
A resolution approving the reappointment of Beverly Coleman to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh oh thirty-five is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh oh thirty-six.
A resolution approving the appointment of Clarina Tolson to the Board of the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh oh thirty-six is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh oh thirty-seven.
A resolution confirming the appointment of Sosi Pedro Tulante Esquire as the city solicitor.
And the Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh oh thirty-seven is adopted. Mr. Decker, one six oh oh thirty-eight.
A resolution approving the appointment of Philoside Alana Pecan Lewis to the Philadelphia Water, Sewer, and Stormwater Rate Board.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and resolution one six oh oh thirty-eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution calling for the City Council Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings on the social services issues affecting the African and Caribbean communities in our city, as well as other minority communities from Latino and Asian countries, introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Maya de Jesus for her courageous anti-bullying message and commitment to help other young victims of bullying, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of myself and Councilwoman Maria Kano Sanchez, we move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for the day. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? And the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to inform the public and our colleagues here that I'll be hosting the Fourth Annual Youth Nonprofit Symposium on Wednesday, February the twenty-fourth, at Pierce College at fourteen twenty Pine Street here in the city of Philadelphia. This is a free event. It starts at eight thirty. It goes till twelve o'clock, and this event is just about funding. Any organization that serves children and youth can come just attend, and our keynote speaker will be Dr. Arthur Evans, our Commissioner of the Department of Behavioral Health and Intellectual Disabilities, and companies represented include Campbell's, Coca-Cola, Wells Fargo, the Greenlight Fund, the Sixers, Comcast, the Philadelphia Cultural Fund, Saint Gobain's, and AT&T and others. The entire issue is about how to get their funds to support your nonprofit and good work for youth. So everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And speeches on the part of the majority, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I'll be brief. Friendly reminder to all of my colleagues and their staff, as we look towards the official closing of the celebration of African-American History Month, we also want to look forward towards the Fourth Annual African-American History Celebration sponsored by this legislative body, and we want to extend a special offer invitation to our freshman colleagues. It's a wonderful artistic experience that includes spoken word, music, and art, and I'm thrilled to say that we will have the church of our Council Lady Blackwell's Home Church, Sharon Baptist Church, next week, so we invite all to attend. The one caveat is if you want to enjoy the wonderful soul food lunch, then you need to have your African-American history ticket indicating that you attended the African-American history program. So ask our colleagues to put that on their schedule, and all staff are invited to attend, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just brief. The other day, there was a ruling that came down from the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania regarding how the school reform commission operates and also what their powers are and what their powers aren't, and so as we move forward, I would like to, my staff work in partnership with yourself and most importantly, the Chair of Education, and really take apart their legal opinion and begin to be prepared before this budget process starts to see how it's going to have an impact, particularly on our body, because over the past four years since I've been here, we've always done the heavy lifting on the city side to provide revenue to keep our school district afloat, and so obviously, there are some things that need to be worked out on a state level, and hopefully, our Philadelphia delegation will be on top of it as well, because ultimately, when these type of rulings come down and they're, and they financial implications, it's usually us, our body, that has to do the heavy lifting to make sure the district has their level of funding, and so my staff will be reaching out to make sure that we're being proactive in front of this issue during this upcoming budget process. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to echo my colleague's sentiments and I think Councilman Johnson for raising up the importance of holding the district accountable for financial projections to which the entire city of Philadelphia must pay attention to. I, speaking only for myself, feel that the Supreme Court did the right thing in clipping a little bit of the SRC's extensive overreach on its perceived powers and believe that it is time for the district to really focus primarily on its first and foremost, most important mission, which is the education of young people. Today at one P.M., we'll be having a hearing to start that process and make sure that the district's focus and prioritization about its services that address the safety and academics of young people are held paramount and that they don't have to be so distracted with its extension and overreach of powers, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Before that concludes our speeches, before we call for an adjournment, I would ask that we can have a five-minute recess, if that's okay with the body, to discuss a legislative matter. Okay? Five minutes. Be right back. Thank you. We are now reconvening. Before we call for a recess, we're going to go a little out of order. Thank you. At this time, the Chair just want to recognize Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez for motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the introductions of bills at this time.
Thank you. It has been moved in property second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the introduction of a bill at this time. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? The motion carries, and the Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Here are the two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of the bill.
An ordinance amending Bill number one five oh one six three approved June eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal Two Thousand and Sixteen Capital Budget by Adding and Revising Certain Projects Amounts and Sources, and an ordinance amending Bill number one five oh one six two approved June eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, entitled An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Twenty-One Included by Adding and Revising Certain Projects Amounts and Sources.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. We will go back into our traditional schedule and call for, I'm sorry, Councilman Green, did you ask me?
Thank you, Council President. Very briefly, I just want to remind council members and staff that the Water Department is providing a briefing regarding constituent service issues in the caucus room. It actually just started a few moments ago, so for those members of council as well as their staff who would like to attend, please go to the caucus room immediately after council session.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Try it one more time. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to. Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that city council stand adjourn until Thursday, February twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, at ten a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly second. The city council stand adjourned until Thursday, February twenty-fifth, twenty sixteen, at ten a.m. All those in favor, ayes have it. Council is adjourned. Thank you all very much.